The July meeting of the Board of Managers for Riley Park to order. This meeting is to be held in person and public while recognizing that a manager may, based on the advice from a healthcare professional, have a legitimate reason for not attending the meeting in a public place in person such as COVID-19 exposure or infection, and in such circumstances may participate in the meeting remotely. So after calling the meeting to order, may we have a roll call? Mr. Smith?
Attendance, Manager Crafton. Manager Duval.
President.
Manager Cook.
President.
Andrew Ziegler.
President.
President Pedersen.
Yes, President.
Managers are present.
Next round to the approval of the agenda, I'd like to remind everybody, we'd like to limit discussion to 10 minutes per manager per item with a two-minute rebuttal. And again, we're going to attempt to be completed by 10 o'clock this evening. So, looking at the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Thank you.
President Pedersen.
Yes.
Managers, I sent an email earlier today, Engineer Sobek and I myself met with Board of Water and Soil Resources late Monday, what to talk about the grant availability. At that time, they suggested we apply for something through the PCA called Public Finance Assistance Grant. That grant deadline is July 31st, and in order to apply for the grant, they have a resolution that needs to be submitted with that, as this is our last regular meeting. Prior to that deadline, I would like to include on the consent agenda, or whoever you would like, the, that resolution for that information.
Okay, so at this point, we'll just stick it in here as 6F and...
Oh, Madam President.
Yes.
So I have a couple of changes I'd like to make to the agenda.
Okay. What would you like?
So, I'm proposing that we, sorry, hope this doesn't get too confusing. I'm proposing that we take items 7F and 7G, if I have the right numbers, the ones having to do with the public hearing and the one for solicitation of bids. I'd like to move that up to the consent agenda. And then I would like to take items 6B and 6D and put those in the new business action items.
Okay, I think I have those changes. Does anyone else have any other changes to the agenda?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I suggest that we put the resolution regarding the public financing, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at it, I wasn't aware, we put that in the new business action items, so perhaps Administrator Jeffrey can just put it on the screen at that time, so we can all look at it. I'm sure it's probably filed and up order, but I think I would appreciate if we just have that under the new business items.
Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none? Maybe have a roll call on the approval of the agenda as amended.
And just to confirm, Managers Ziegler and Duval agreed to those changes recommended by Manager Cook?
Yes.
Okay. On approval of the agenda, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item are matters of public interest, and so I'd like to know if there's anyone who would like to address the board here or virtually. I am not seeing anybody here. Anybody virtually?
Not.
Looks like, no. All right, then we will proceed to the reading and approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 6th meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 6th meeting as written.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Some corrections.
Okay. What corrections do you have, Manager Crafton?
6, 9, and 25. Above the line that says upon roll call vote, says better options that much than, I think that that should be than, okay, page 9, line 202. Use Atlas 14 because that yet the, because that, the it should be is, because that is published information. And line, or on page 11, line 282, drain tile around it and to line the stormwater, we don't need the as in there. That's basically what I had.
Any other changes to the minutes? Hearing none? Roll call please.
On approval of the minutes, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Upstate.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
Onto the committee reports. I believe we should adopt the resolution after receiving the report, so we will proceed first with receiving the Personnel Committee report. Is there, are there any questions on the Personnel Committee report?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, I'm sorry, just bear with me, I'm trying to get my computer file here to work, my apologies. Okay, I apologize about that, I don't know why. Well, my, the minutes are raises a concern, because, unless I missed it, I didn't see any written proposals, you know, to consider. And so, to me, I don't know if I'm comparing apples to apples or apples to oranges, so that's my concern about having to do the salary benefit survey. That was the, you know, the question I have, and I would like to, I think we should be seeing those comparisons before we agree, given that there's a significant price difference in, you know, I'd like to know why, you know, there is that discrepancy, what's actually going to be provided, so as we get there, I don't think we should be, you know, awarding bids on this basis with a lack of information, notwithstanding the fact that there's a recommendation by Personnel Committee.
Any other comments or questions? I'm hearing none. I guess my response back to you is, when I tried finding people to actually do the survey, it took over two months to even get people interested enough to respond back. I did give them the same information and told them what we wanted, and so getting the information back and reading through it, with a few options that they each gave us, the basic survey we wanted, which was salary survey to start with. Gallagher did not even bid back on the benefits portion of it. They only bid back on the salary portion of it, and they had the same number of jobs for both, both bids. And I actually gave them the org chart, so they saw what our org chart was, and both of them also got a copy of Forest Lake Comfort Lake Benefit or Salary Survey, so that they knew what it was we were looking for. So I feel comfortable that in fact, the proposals were based on the same input from them, and the differences being, we've got some other options back that we perhaps did not need, plus we were missing the benefits portion from Gallagher. So that's what we concluded at the Personnel Committee.
Well, Madam President, I'll just use my two-minute response. With all due respect, I don't think that's a best management practice in providing information to a board regarding bids that one's received, and the best, pretty clear best practice is to give a comparison chart, also a copy of what was sent to the various companies who we wanted to solicit bids from. So that's my comment, I don't think this was a best practice and approach, and certainly not a best practice on informing us as to what the results of the solicitation were. I rest.
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Crafton?
We had a really thorough discussion of this, and we also felt really comfortable with the group that we had gone with before for the interviewing for administrative positions. So it was thoroughly vetted by us in the committee, we had a lot of discussion about it. I'm totally comfortable with obviously what we're doing here.
Thank you, Manager Crafton.
President Pedersen, Managers?
Yes.
While the request for proposals itself was not sent to all of the Board of Managers, on the 5th of July, an email did go out to all the managers and Mr. Smith that had the two proposals that were submitted from David Drowne Associates as well as Gallagher.
Thank you. I believe that we're on to the Audit and Finance Committee report. Any questions?
Yes, Madam President.
Manager Cook?
Sorry, bear with me while I pull that up. Well, I was rather disturbed by the, what appeared to be Mr. Nielsen's response, and his, that's an accurate reflection of his responses on the issues of, on the two issues that obviously came up, but the most important one is the time period in which we pay those expenses. I didn't think that was very professional, and it just reinforces my concern about Mr. Nelson, Nielsen's, whatever he pronounced it, abilities to deal with clients, and I've stated this before for multiple years, and I'm astonished that they made him a partner based upon his previous track record and his response. Either he should have, we either didn't communicate to him our adoption of our policy, in which case shame on us, but at the same token, he should have been inquired, and as I gathered it, they made no review, adjustment, or whatever in their audit report, which to me is totally My understanding was, or reading it, was kind of like the same old statement, well, you didn't do it, well, we have a policy and I believe we've done it and complied with it. And if I'm correct, it's just, that kind of response is just totally unacceptable, and I think that we should be sending a letter to the audit firm expressing our dissatisfaction with the way that this process was handled. And if Mr. Nielsen isn't capable of applying best practices in dealing with us, we should get, we should get somebody else. But I think we went through great lengths to make it clear about the contracts, and, you know, if there was something further we need to do, I mean, that's one thing, but I, I believe we, I mean, it sounded like we gave the information, we told them what we adopted and everything, and to me, it's just not acceptable raising an issue that doesn't exist. At the very least, he should have said, okay, the district responded, they provided this, and this is our conclusion. To say nothing, which is how I read it, to say nothing that we kind of like didn't do anything, that's just not, that's just not a good way to do business. I don't care if you're an auditor or whatever, so, so, you know, those are my responses. And I've told you before, I've had an issue, I'm sorry, with Mr. Nielsen in the past, I didn't know, everybody knows that. He never gave us those responses. Last year, he didn't show up, if I'm correct, and I believe this year, he's not showing up again. That's just totally unacceptable, and for me, from my perspective, whether I end up continuing to serve on this body for other reasons, I think the state auditor and the whatever organization that's in charge of credentials for auditors needs to, needs to know about this, as well as the firm management. So I'd appreciate it if you would tell me if you're going to do anything, if not, I will certainly do something about it, because it's not right, it's not the way to do business, you know, and especially considering the period of time that we've worked with this firm. So those are my comments.
President Pedersen, Managers, Manager Cook is not wrong in this. In fact, this is the second year that we've provided them with the new agreements that we have written, and this time, Mr. Smith provided the actual statute that describes, unless other provisions are made. The auditor is one of two consultants who report to the Board of Managers. If the Board would like me to draft a letter or someone else, I'd be happy to do so, bring it back to the Board for their review and approval, but it would be up to the Board of Managers as how they would best like to address that.
Yes.
So, I tend to agree with that, and on the surface, in the ordinary course of business, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal in terms of audit findings, and I understand that there's some, some law that specifically talks about this, and that's the reason it's flagged, but again, I don't know why it wasn't changed. I guess I would agree with you sending a letter stating our position, I guess. If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second for...
To clarify, if I may, that would be to draft a letter to bring back to the Board for your review and approval.
Yes, yes, right.
It's my view, yes.
Yes, Manager Crafton?
I had something on this order that I wanted to talk about, but I was going to just do it under Manager Comments Report, but I think there might be a way to expedite what we're doing and how we're getting the bills paid, so I could talk about it later. I think there might be a way to expedite how we're doing, getting the bills out the door and stuff like that, so that it could go faster and it wouldn't cause a problem.
Okay. Okay, so I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments on the motion before we have a roll call? Mr. Smith?
On the motion to send, have the administrator prepare a letter for the Board's consideration on the audit, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, I think that's it for the Audit and Finance Committee report. Receive the Citizens Advisory Committee report. Do we have, I believe we have Marilyn here, is that who we have here representing the Welcome Marilyn.
Thank you. We actually, I believe, have Marilyn and Bonnie.
Oh, hi Bonnie.
But I can speak, she's not speaking up. So we, we met, and we had a presentation from Rachel Whittington on the Soil Health Project, which was excellent. We had conversation on water conservation. Dave Paulson on the CAC Committee is going to write up for us a description of why water conservation is important. He thinks it's probably little understood that this is a common resource to us all, and everything we can do to protect it is vital. We discussed a number of water conservation measures, one of them was using lake water to irrigate shoreline buffers. Bonnie did some subsequent investigation and revealed that water appropriation would require a permit for non-essential use, and when I clicked on that non-essential use, lawn sprinkling is considered non-essential, but to me, that doesn't rule out establishing a shoreline buffer, so it's kind of a gray area. Another suggestion was implementing or partnering with cities to support a water conservation audit, similar to energy audits. Could, the cost of these could be kind of nominal and could be reduced for lower income. People, the audit could include things like fixing leaky faucets, checking toilets for leaks, installing low-flow valves on faucets and showerheads, checking irrigation systems if there is one for leaks, check that they're not watering impermeable surfaces such as sidewalks, driveways, and streets, installing smart watering sensors. Then we could do something similar for businesses that we do to the smart cell training and certify them if they have gone through, so that they are practicing water conservation measures inside and out of the building. And of course, we already support NADA planting, shoreline plantings, rain gardens, et cetera. And we also, Bonnie is going to propose a process to identify key discussion items so that we can have those right at the top of our minutes. We can have a method of defining those. That is my report. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Manager Cook? Yes.
Well, I commend the committee for, you know, specifically addressing this water conservation, you know, issue, which, you know, if we're going to go through all the effort of whoever it was to make changes to the statute, it would have been nice to have had a change to the statute that would give us some more authority to govern water usages, you know, from wells, but as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, we basically don't have that authority, and, you know, if I'm wrong, you know, I'm happy to be corrected on that, but what I would, I think we should have some authority on that. Anybody, I don't know if anybody's been around long enough when the USGA in Carver County made the presentations regarding groundwater, and the fact that our groundwater that we're, at least in most of Carver County, that we're sucking out of the ground, is 7,000 years old, and it takes years for water on the surface to get to the operas. Now, that's a little bit different in the eastern part of Carver County, but I think that just shows that it is extremely important that we be concerned about conserving water. So I'm in favor of whatever methods, I mean, audits are great, I think we should be looking at adding a criteria to any of our grants that would, maybe we give a bump in the amount of money if you have a project where you're doing something that's actually a water conservation aspect to it, so for one thing. And then lastly, I know this, we came up, I believe it was Eden Prairie, forgive me, I may not be remembering it correctly, but I think at one time, we talked about, and maybe we contributed to a program to give smart water controllers to residents, and I think that would be one of the, you know, great ways to help, you know, limit water, because, you know, you see people watering after we've had almost record rainfalls. Now, there are certain areas, I understand, still need, you know, maybe watering, et cetera, but I would like to see, you know, us partnering with maybe all the cities with some method of encouraging people to put in these smart waters, I mean, maybe they buy them and we pay for installation, or vice versa, I don't know what it is, you know, I mean, that's, I think staff would have, and CAC would have plenty of good ideas, but I think in the long run, it's extremely important, because I know people think, well, we've got all this rain, so we don't have to worry about it, but again, according to the USGA or Geological Service, is the water we're pumping out is 7,000 years old, it doesn't get there overnight, so I just wanted to point those out, and I wish the CAC would continue to push on this and come up with ideas, and I, and also come up with an idea where we can report where we see problems. I bike passed, I bike passed a couple of ones, they don't do it this year because of the rain, but in past, they've been watering sidewalks, like unbelievable, so much it runs into the streets, et cetera, et cetera. So if there is a way to capture that information, and we could politely then go and inspect it ourselves, and then, you know, have a polite citizen say, can we help you, you know, on this, there's resources, so we're not wasting our water, our 7,000-year-old water. So I used up all my time, thank you.
Any other questions, comments for the CAC?
Madam President?
Yes.
Looks like Bonnie has one, too. The one thing, I was there, and I think the partnering with the cities was discussed, especially on the audit side of it. I mean, the city, they're paying the city for the water, I think in most cases, and they pay for water and sewer, so, you know, any water they use that ends up on the lawn, they're paying for sewer anyway. So the water audits would definitely work better, I think, with a partnership with the cities.
You have a...
President?
Yes.
Just a short note, watershed districts have always had the authority to regulate, conserve, and control the use of water within the watershed district, and also to conserve groundwater, so there is not an absence of watershed district authority. The challenge in this issue is that, as Manager Ziegler noted, municipalities are the water utilities, and they certainly have a clear role, so it's a partnership with the cities in addressing the issue that's really called for.
Thank you. Bonnie, yes?
I just wanted to clarify a couple points. This was sort of a key discussion item, something to let you know what we're working on. The City of Chanhas and City of Eden Prairie actually have programs where they do provide smart sensors, so we are going to, we were just exploring what we could do, how we could collaborate, but this was just a kind of a letting you know what we're talking about, since we don't have a motion. And the other one about the water appropriation, there was 103B.211, there's this rule that says in small lakes and Hennepin Counties, you can't draw from the lake to, like water your lawn without a permit from the watershed district. So that was a rule I'd not seen, we haven't talked about, but just came up. So I don't know...
Yeah, water sprinkling, but to me, restoring a shoreline buffer, you know, might be in a different category, and it sounds like it's all...
Right, this was just a, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it sounds like you need to do, you need to do a little research on what exactly that covers, and...
Yes.
It sounds to me like you've made forward progress, and we'll look forward to hearing some good things back from you in the upcoming months. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Madam President, just real short.
Yes.
For whatever reason, I was under the impression that there was something about the cities and municipalities and wells, et cetera, in some statute, and I could be totally wrong, but I think it would be great if, if Mr. Smith could, you know, definitively outline what our abilities are, and that we should, along with other things, consider, including in our rules, at least a discussion and possibly provisions that would assist in the conservation, you know, of our, of our water resources. So I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie, perhaps you might want to reach out to Mr. Smith and talk to him a bit and see what you can get. How about that? Great.
Fine with me?
Yeah. Okay, I think that brings us to receiving the June staff report. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam President, bear with me, just one, please. Well, first of all, I already addressed the issue about the, the auditor. One, one theme I kind of saw going through the staff report is that it struck me, and I'm totally wrong here, it struck me that we collect a lot of data, but I don't, I don't recall seeing or, and if it's there, I don't know where, the reports or collection of the data are located, so that should we be interested in looking at that data and maybe seeing trends? So that should we be interested in looking at that data, um, and, and maybe seeing trends? We could look at it and if we're collecting it, it seems to be at a minimum, uh, we should be having some annual report that could, would be made available to us managers, staff and even the public about, you know, all, I mean, I, I won't go through the whole thing, but you, you can, if you go through the staff report, you can see all the areas where staff is collecting all this data. And so my question is, we should be having reports and what do we use it for? And just so we can say, yeah, we, let's continue to do that because our, you know, money's valuable, time is valuable. I'm sure we're collecting for all the good reasons, but I think it'd be good for all of us to know, especially if we have any, you know, new managers, it's all, that would be good to, to have that information, uh, at hand or know where you can get that information if you're so inclined. My, one, and, and this leads into, we did have the discussion about, should we have rules and watering and all this? I noticed that we have Chaska and Deep Haven, I think their plans are up this year. I think Chaska submitted something already, if I'm not mistaken, maybe Deep Haven did. I, you know, I'm sorry, I don't recall all the details we did, but I think we're, we're really at a point where we need to go and look at our rules. And maybe a good thing in connection with, I know you've mentioned Administrator Jeffrey about starting to look at what we have to do to renew the plan. I think that was a comment in here, but if, if not sooner, at least in connection with looking at the plan and coming with the next 10-year plan, looking at these rules that I think we need to protect our waters, uh, et cetera, use the waters. And then I believe, uh, and perhaps maybe sometime Mr. Smith could give us a summary of all the law changes, but it was my reading that, uh, maybe intentionally or inadvertently, the legislature gave watershed districts more authority to cover surface water uses. And I, and if I'm, if that's true, I think that gives us an opportunity to deal with wake boats, which I think are our number one issue with shoreline in lakes where there are wake boats. I think we should be examining, uh, you know, that, that authority that we have to exercise reasonable controls and restraints to preserve our shoreline and, and minimize, uh, putting a bunch of phosphorus, et cetera, into our lakes, which, you know, as everybody probably knows, I mean, not telling especially staff anything new, the phosphorus adds to, makes algae possible, which, you know, can make people sick, et cetera, uh, adds to plant growth besides the algae and often the bad ones. So I, I, I just come back to, I think it's time we need to address, uh, you know, rules and regulations beyond permitting and including activities on our lakes. And just give me one second, I wanna look at, see if there's anything specific I wanted Kudos on getting all of the carp. I think that's it for now. I will, I have a couple of things to address about permits when we get to that permit section.
Okay, great. Thank you.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Manager Cook does bring up a good point. Uh, there is a lot of data that the district, um, does, uh, acquire, accumulate throughout the, uh, the year. Um, and those are put, oh, I've got so many screens here, I'm trying to bring up just the right one. So, um, so those are put every year, they're assembled into Staff Maxwell and others work on it into our annual raw reports. So, and then if you go into the water report themselves, um, you'll be able to see, uh, the different chapters on the different data. So all of our data, for instance, if we go to chloride monitoring, which isn't gonna happen, so the data is assembled in here and talked. The raw data is not necessarily in here. Lots of times the raw data is incomprehensible until it's put in. So it is, uh, assembled into this annual report that is available on our site, uh, and it's also attached to our, uh, annual report that's given to the agencies. The other thing that we do with the data that we collect is we use it specifically to, uh, design projects and to determine, um, effluent loads coming in and what we anticipate they will be going on. So that's a very good point. There is a lot of data I think the public would be interested in, um, and that is on our website. If you go into our library, uh, and just search, uh, annual report, you'd be able to, or water resource report, you'll be able to come up with it. Annual report would as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Crafton?
That's what I was gonna say too. I mean, just to see the raw data doesn't necessarily give you a good understanding. We're, we're looking for trends and Josh does all that work. So I was thinking he would, might wanna comment, but that's what the annual report has in it. It has his water report, it has all kinds of things. So, Josh?
Yeah, just so the manager, where we are trying to make more of that data available on our website, like the Score Your Shore tool, obviously that was, uh, kind of a big, uh, step that we took, but also trying to put some of that carp data that's right there on the website so you don't have to go into the annual report as well. Uh, we are looking at doing some things like that, aquatic plants, stuff like that, so.
Actually, there is a moment or two, Josh, if you would take just a minute or two and talk about what you're trying to do with the point intercept surveys, uh, from the different sources.
Yeah, so, uh, all the lakes have a wide range number of surveys going back all the way to 2009, um, and we're trying to kinda group them all together per lake and, uh, have maps available that you can kinda scan through as the years progress, uh, so you can see the aquatic vegetation change. And also we're looking at metrics, uh, such as FQI, they have FQI for aquatic plants, um, the Simpsons, uh, diversity index, these are all different metrics that look at specifically aquatic plants. And we're hoping to, once we get all the data together, we, we have all the data, we're trying to process it so that it's more easily digestible and we can actually start looking at, uh, differences and changes over time, so.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Uh, I, I think that, I think that that's great. I'm glad you're working on it. As part of this on the website, you know, think of it from the neophyte that knows nothing. And is there something we can add to the website that would, you know, let people know what data's out there? I don't know whether it's a Q and A or whatever, you know, hey, you know, here, here's what's available and it's in a list and then there's just a link to what it is. But, you know, just a water report, it's kinda, people don't necessarily wanna go page through a whole thing, uh, but a summary that says, hey, the water report covers A, B, C, D, E, F and G, lean, learn more, go here. And just, because I think so many of us till you got involved in it, and even now, I've been involved for over six years, not, not knowing where that information is. And I think that would be a real service to the public and also would show that, hey, you know, we, we do this stuff for a reason and here's the results of, of what we do. It's a good way, I think, to show the public that we're doing work and spending their money wisely and giving results on that basis. So thank you.
I believe we're on to the June Engineers Report. Any questions or comments?
Madam President, just one moment. I don't think I do, but I just, I might have one short comment here. I just pulling it up. Well, I just have a couple of questions if I could. On page one, under General Services, there's item F, updated the general resources web map with the most high, recent high resolution imagery. And i- is that on our website? If not on our website, what, what is that used for or is it useful? Should it be accessible from the website?
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Managers, um, we have a public facing map, um, but this map is the internal bar and watershed map where we have, um, cities, stormwater systems would be on it, um, parcel maps, things of that nature. It's a lot of data. So some of that data that is in there is in the public facing map, some of that data is not because it was shared with us by the municipalities that own that data. So we don't necessarily have the ownership for that data. So we make as much available, uh, as we can through our web map, um, that is public facing.
Thank you. Another question, Manager Cook?
I, I did have a couple, a couple of questions. Uh, I, I've mentioned this before, item I in the bottom of page two, you know, it says we get calls and all that, and I'm wondering, do we make any effort to track the calls and the types of information that we get and, and whether, so that we know what we're spending time in and possibly look at ways of providing answers to the most frequently asked questions so we're not consuming, you know, time and paying for information that we could make, you know, readily available through FAQs or whatever the case would be. So that's just a comment, uh, you know, in that regard. Hang on, let's see here. Have they, I'm going to page, quickly page four, the task order 037 on sediment analysis, and it had a couple of dates for a couple of memos and it says they've been delivered. Will, have they been or will they be shared with us or will there be a discussion of that for us?
President Pedersen, managers, yes, that is, uh, intended for a future meeting likely August, September at the latest.
Okay. And then I, I'll just make this the last comment, the Duck Lake Outlet modifications that I had, is this, is what is being designed, has this, has this been submitted to the DNR? Is it, do we have approvals for any of this?
President Pedersen, managers, no, we, it has not been submitted to the DNR yet. We don't have, um, designs, final designs yet to be submitted. So no, there are no approvals either.
Thank you.
And, and last but not least, I just wanna again, thank, uh, Mr. Sobiak and Barr for putting together that, uh, status, uh, table at the end of the report. I, it's terrific. Thank you.
I think that concludes the Engineers Report and comments. Next, we're on to the June Regulatory Report. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. So the first item is, second from the bottom, uh, line under applications received, there's reference to an after the fact application for landscaping. And I'm wondering, I know we talked before about having after the facts have to cover some of the, the costs of having to go through these applications. And I'm wondering, are we applying that to, to this one? Because I don't, I don't think it's, you know, fair to people who, you know, do it timely on that basis. So that, that was number one question.
Yeah, President Pedersen, Manager Cook, um, yes. Uh, in fact, uh, we have informed the landscaper that not only do they need to apply for the after fact permit, they'll have to go through the entire review with the Board of Managers because it is after the fact and that we will recoup, uh, the cost of time for review and inspections on that, uh, as well as, as a, uh, financial assurance will be taken.
Thank you.
I have one, one last item, and having to do very last, oh, I don't know if it's the very last page. Has, yeah, I think it is, the one having about violation summaries. And, uh, there's this one, but yeah, also in the, trying to remember where was it, believe in the staff report. We've got a, a number of, it seems to me we have a number of issues with, uh, on Lake Lucy Road about failures to get permits, a number of them. And also I brought it up before and I don't recall if I got a response or not, but there's at least was these two locations on the south side of Lake Lucy where I'm gonna guess the city went and did something with stormwater. And I don't recall if we got a permit or they did it. I mean, I was biking by and my, like, all of a sudden, there's, you know, uh, backhoes and whatever it is digging in, in those things. And I just wanna make sure that we're making everybody get the permits that they're required, you know, to, to get on these. And if I read correctly, some of these, uh, violations have been going on for a couple of years. And I think it's, would be really incumbent upon us to really come up with a prescribed, you know, procedure with timelines that, you know, we're gonna do A, B, C, two contacts or whatever it is, but prescribe it and then follow it because otherwise this gets to be in the area of arbitrary and capricious and, you know, I don't want somebody arguing, well, you know, you change your rules or you don't have any definite rules. So that's what I wanted to point out was make sure that, I think we should be coming up with something a little more definite so it's clear we handle these within a certain period of time, uh, you know, unless both parties agree to, you know, changes, that, all that typical stuff. So that was the last thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, to approve a resolution 24 dash code 401, Accepting Committee and Member, which?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, and may we have a roll call, please? Mr. Smith?
On resolution 24041, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next, we need to confirm a board representative for the CAC August 19th meeting. Do I have anybody that's going to volunteer to be there?
I'll volunteer.
Great. Manager Duval will be there? Thank you.
There's none in July?
Um, apparently not. Is there not one in July?
It's the 17th.
Yeah, I thought there was.
The 17th, because I'm gonna be in Maryland.
The 15th. Is this July 15th?
Okay, so that's not on there, so.
Actually, we're looking for the July 15th, baby.
Thank you so much for catching that. Okay, on to the consent agenda. And, um, all the items on the consent agenda would be 6C, Permit 2024038 for Lunds and Byerlees. Items 7F, Resolution 24 dash 045, authorizing the administrator to notice the public hearing for the budget and levy. And item 7G, adopt Resolution 24 dash 046, authorizing the administrator to solicit bids for the Lotus Lake alum treatment. So at this point, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt Resolution 24 dash 042 to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you so much.
Hey, I'm looking for clarification here. Manager Cook? Just, I'm gonna say the title of what I heard that you removed from the consent agenda. Um, if you could just confirm that, please, that you removed item E, which was the, approved the Highland Lake?
Boat launch.
Boat launch. And item E, which is authorizing the administrator to submit the point source implementation grant application?
He also proved D. He also pulled D.
I wanted to D. I, I'm sorry, if I said E, that was a mistake. I just wanted to remove D.
The payment application one.
E is in boy and D is in dog.
That's.
And the rest is, is, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make certain I did hear you correctly.
Thank you for double checking.
So I understood that he also wanted to put the resolution about the grant point source implementation down underneath new business? No? Okay, I'm sorry, I, I did not.
No, I must have misspoke. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. So that is not included in new business? You are putting that on the consent agenda?
Remains on the consent.
Yes. Okay, great.
That's E, right?
Okay, yes, that's E. Thank you so much. All right, so at this point, I think we're ready for the roll call.
On the consent agenda, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
So now we're on to new business and the first item on the consent, uh, items removed from the consent agenda would be Permit 2024027 Highland Lake Boat Launch. Any questions or comments? I'm assuming yes. Manager Cook?
Yes, I, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, but does it, can anybody pull up the plan and show me where, my understanding, so they're adding, so they can do the boat launch, I assume at a certain angle, whatever it is. And then it talked about they were cutting somewhere, but I didn't know how or where and, and how they're gonna go, uh, uh, uh. and how they're going to go approach that.
Manager Sobak, can you share your screen? Otherwise, I will.
So the first plan that I have up here, Managers, is a schematic view of the area showing where the boat launch is in the Highland Lake, as well as their trail realignment that they're doing. If we look in profile view, this profile view that's on the screen would be representative of the ramp down into the lake. So coming down a very steep slope, they're flattening it out a little bit, and then it gets even steeper as it works its way down into the lake.
Can you show the?
Yeah, where the cut is, I was wondering where, I understand you're making, they're making a compensatory removal. Is that right? Or did I miss, totally misunderstand?
That's correct. In terms of floodplain fill, there are portions big in this to hopefully make it go visible. The blue line on this map shows where the 100-year floodplain sits. There are areas here for the ramp where they are filling in the 100-year floodplain, and then there are areas over here where they're excavating out for the the trail system.
And is that where they're going to make the compensatory?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I just figured it out.
Correct. The compensatory storage is, is in this area here, just to the south of the ramp itself.
Okay, okay. I just didn't, didn't understand where it was or how it was going to be. So I'm fine. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Madam President?
Yes.
Unless somebody else has a question?
I don't believe so.
So I will move then that we adopt the proposed resolution set forth in the staff report regarding Permit Number 2024-027.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And I believe we're ready for a roll call. Mr. Smith?
On Permit 2024-027, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
And we're on to approving payment application number one for Peterson Companies for the Lake Suez and Park Pond Reuse Intake Modification. A question here, Manager Cook?
That's correct. One moment, please. I'm just, sorry, I'm pulling it up, so. Okay, so on, you know, it says on page one of one of the actual application for payment, in the very first footnote, it says at rate of 5% until completed to date equals 95% of current contract price and a rate of 0% thereafter. It was my understanding that we were going to be, we adopted the policy of withholding the 5% until, I believe the stat, whatever the statute says, substantial completion on that basis. And so I'm not sure that that language matches our policy that we adopted. And if it doesn't, then I would suggest we change that language so that it's clear exactly what we're going to hold and how long we will hold. So that's my comment.
That was footnote one, correct?
Yeah.
I believe at this point, I'd be looking for a motion to accept Resolution 24-044.
So I'll move?
Or, excuse me, wrong. The.
It's just the approval of the payoff.
Just approval of the payment, excuse me. I'm looking for, here it is, 24-047. No.
No.
No. Just there's no resolution. Okay.
Payoff.
All right, just the payout. All right, so I need a resolution for that.
I'll move that.
Okay, second. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to move to amend the motion to add that the note number one will be corrected to comply with our duly adopted process and procedure for retention.
So is that okay with the person, with Manager Crafton who motioned, and Manager Duval who seconded?
Yes.
Yes.
If it's necessary.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith, a roll call, please.
On PAP one, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero.
That includes, concludes the items removed from the consent agenda, which moves us to 7B, Accepting the June Treasurer's Report.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we accept the report.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Any questions? Comments?
Madam President?
Manager Cook?
You know, I'll just reiterate my previous objections and concerns regarding, in particular, the use of the visa activity schedule, not so much the schedule, but the failure to itemize in our financials the actual vendors. And again, a credit card company is not the vendor. It is a lending, lending facility. And for us to characterize it otherwise, I believe, is not consistent with generally accepted accounting principles. And particularly, I would think that the, unless the auditors are going to go through each one of these items for an entire year, I don't see how the auditors could give a clean audit with at least, unless they actually did testing for this. And even so, it would not be consistent with generally accepted accounting principles. Or even if it was, it wouldn't be consistent with best management practices, because it would make it too difficult in order for us to be able to determine how much we were spending with any particular vendor for services or materials.
So I believe we have a motion and a second to accept the June Treasurer's Report. Mr. Smith?
On the June Treasurer's Report, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
Next, we're looking for a motion to approve paying of the bills, 24-043.
That we approve a Resolution 24-03 to pay the bills.
Thank you, Manager Crafton?
I'll second.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Smith?
On Resolution 24043, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Abstain.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
Next, we're on the reinstatement of permit modification 2016-017 for the Southwest Light Rail Transit. Would you like to address this in some way, Mr. Sobiak?
Thank you, Managers. What you have before you tonight in the new packet is requests from the Met Council to reinstate the Permit 2016-017, because the permit did expire in December of 2021. They continued doing work that was compliant with their original approved permit. Erosion control was maintained. Everything was still compliant throughout the entire period. They came back in for a permit modification. There are power substations that will power the train where they wanted to change the, I'll call it the finished ground surface. They had originally proposed and were approved to put in pervious pavement in those areas. After getting quotes back from the contractors and working with the contractors, they discovered that they cannot get the pervious pavement that they had originally thought they could at a reasonable price. Just it isn't really available in such small quantities that they need for this project. So rather than using pervious pavement, they're proposing to put the majority of that area in with a crushed rock. You think of like a railroad ballast, that's the type of rock, inch and a half granite rock in that area. It will be pervious. It will allow water to filter through it and infiltrate into the ground. And then there are some small areas, roughly 280 square feet, I believe, at each substation that they want to have for a parking pad, which would be regular bituminous at that point. They are compliant with the stormwater criteria, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook?
I don't have, I mean, I don't have any questions, and I would, you know, move to adopt the resolutions with a small change. So unless anybody else has comments, I will proceed with what I suggest to be the change.
Please proceed.
So I move that we adopt the proposed resolutions with the one foul, one change. You go to the paragraph, the first paragraph that starts resolved and have agreed, resolve that the application for reinstatement of Permit 2016-017 and the proposed modification to Permit 2016-017 is approved, and then continue with the remainder of that sentence.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Proceed with the vote.
On Permit 2016-017, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
That leads us to the adoption 24-044, which is to enter into an agreement with David Drone Associates to perform a compensation and benefits study. Would you like to say anything at all, Mr. Jeffrey, about this, or?
President Peterson, Managers, the last, the last survey that the district did was 2018, I believe, 2017. There have been other benefit surveys done by other watershed organizations. My understanding that you brought it to Metro Watershed two meetings ago now? And have been working the phone banks to try and get at least two quotes. You did get the one from Gallagher. We got one from David Drone Associates. David Drone Associates did get the full scope of it. Gallagher was light on what they were doing with the benefits, but either way, there was a significant price discrepancy between those two. And I would recommend, and Personnel Committee as well recommended, to go with David Drone Associates. That's really it.
Thank you. Okay. So I need a motion? Thank you. Thank you so much.
Move to adopt Resolution 24044.
Great. And Manager Ziegler, you seconded it.
Yes.
Any questions or comments before we vote?
It's Madam President?
Yes.
For the reasons I stated regarding the discussion of the minutes of the Personnel Committee, you know, I have to state my objection to approving this resolution, given the fact that, you know, I didn't have a, one, I didn't have to receive a comparison, and I'm not saying it wasn't sent out. But more importantly, as I've said multiple times, I am not in the business of approving resolutions for agreements that I have not seen. And so therefore, if we're going to move forward to this, I think what should happen is that this resolution should be changed to provide for legal counsel to prepare an agreement to be brought back to us for approval. So that's as to this resolution. But commenting on the issue of getting somebody to bid on these things, which kind of finds shocking, people would turn down money. But have we explored going to, what is it, Minnesota Watersheds now, and seeing about getting Minnesota Watersheds to take a lead on trying to get these surveys done every so often? And as part of their, their business and getting member watershed districts to either help contribute or make that a part of their fees, and something that then everybody could could receive.
So I believe I can respond to that. I've actually brought that up every single year since I've been on this board. And I have brought it up more than once each year, and so far, there has been no interest on behalf of Minnesota Watersheds.
May I just follow up just briefly?
Sure.
What do you think there, it, would there might be, or have you asked whether or not just the metro area would be interested? Because I could kind of see why some of the outstate people, you know, be they who they are.
So I actually brought it to the January meeting of the Metro Watersheds. I had one other watershed who was interested. That's it.
Well, it's shocking how they can do their job.
Yes, Manager Crafton. Manager Crafton, you have a comment?
Yes, before we vote on this, in the first now there be it resolved, that last sentence, for the performance of a compensation benefit survey for a cost of not to, should say, exceed? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That has been changed. It was sent out to the managers earlier and updated on the website.
Right, right. Thank you.
All right. Now, let's vote.
Okay, I believe we're ready to vote.
On Resolution 24044, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
That leads us to discussion items. The first is Resolutions for Minnesota Watersheds 2025 Legislative Platform. Yes.
President Peterson, Managers, as in years past, they are requesting that watershed districts put forward resolutions that they would like to be considered as part of the overall legislative platform. The packet was provided to you. I guess I would be looking to the managers of how they would like to proceed, if you'd like a workshop to discuss different items, if you would like to present ideas to us, if you would like us to come back to you with thoughts. Really looking for guidance from the board on how they would like to move forward this year.
Manager Ziegler, you look like you're looking at me as if you have something to say.
Actually, I didn't. I was just wondering.
Does anybody have a comment here?
That's Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook?
I agree with Administrator Jeffrey. I think that a good process would be for us to put together whatever we think would be good proposals, send them to Administrator Jeffrey. And that staff, you know, because they're more keenly involved in, you know, some of the issues, that they would put together, you know, a list of their suggestions. And I'm sure Administrator Jeffrey's probably got more because he's part of that administrator group or whatever that is. And that, you know, possible, do we not have a workshop coming up in a week? Or am I wrong?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, we do have a workshop coming up on the 18th. So yes, eight days away from now. Yep.
I was wondering if maybe we could at least take a few minutes, if this could be circulated before that in accordance with the, you know, the law, but take a few minutes just to see if anybody has any visceral, if not intellectual reactions to. if anybody has any visceral, if not intellectual reactions to proposals.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
We only have the one item, and that's the budget discussion that night, so depending on the length of that, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have 15, 20 minutes to discuss resolutions, at least initially.
Okay. How did the rest of the board feel?
Sounds good.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Sounds fine. Manager Crafton, you okay?
Yeah. Question on some of this one, where there's a chance.
Are you thinking maybe at the, at the board workshop, or would you like to ask questions?
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
I was just wondering about the sunset ones. How do we, how do we end up with a watershed district person on the TEP? Was that approved?
Oh, President Pedersen, Managers, you mean the WAC technical evaluation panels? So yes, right now, Manager Crafton is referring to the watershed district is to be notified of all technical evaluation panel activities. They are invited as a guest and to comment, but we are not considered an active member of the TEP. And that might be a very good resolution to put forward, that we be an active and participating member of the technical evaluation panel voting member.
Essentially, we could just reactivate it because the language is still pertinent.
Yeah. President Pedersen, Managers, Manager Crafton also comes up with another good point of something I need to verify with Jan Voight for Minnesota Watersheds, which of ours are sunsetting, which are not, and the process for that. So I'll get that before the 18th.
She had in her hand now.
Oh, she did put it in there? Okay, good.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a consensus that if you have something you'd like to recommend for a resolution, please send it to Manager Jeffrey. And then at the board workshop, we will have those before the meeting and have a chance to comment or make questions.
President Pedersen, Managers, I likely will not have drafted resolutions. My thought would be to vet the topics that we have at that meeting, and then I will work with legal counsel to draft the resolutions.
That work okay for everybody?
Yep.
One comment that is relevant, but not, doesn't really affect what we're going to do right now. So working with the new group of people rather than Ray, they pointed out, you know, we're kind of late in the game. We should be doing this, we should be working with our grassroots with our legislators already on what we want done. So we, you know, we complain that we get nothing done while we're kind of late to the game. The new, we'll be trying to work up a new plan, but obviously this year, we're on the schedule we're on. But next year, we hope to be on a better schedule.
So in other words, they're asking us to do a little bit more groundwork before we actually get to the legislative session where they're voting on this.
Right. But in order to do that, we have to make, we have to get it through the system, so we're all saying the same thing.
Same thing, right. Okay. Yes.
So on that topic, well, we have talked for a year or so about doing an open house, and one of the things that really came out of this discussion that, that it was talking about is the need to have better relationships with all of our legislative people, so that it's not in the 11th hour, we're trying to bring this up. We need to have that relationship built. And so maybe, hopefully, early fall, we could do an open house and maybe even do it with Nine Mile or if Minnehaw Creek was interested, but bring all of the, bring all of the local ones together for the cities that we touch and do something.
I think we would need to have a much larger breadth to draw them in. I think, I'm afraid that we get one representative that would show up, but we just had an open house. So yeah, maybe working with Nine Mile, Minnehaw Creek, Lower Men, we could get more traction that way.
Why not invite mine?
Well, I'll invite them, whether or not they will come.
They come. It's another matter. Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I have these comments. You know, my understanding is, after having talked to some lobbyists, is that we literally need to start working on these new resolutions, starting at the close of the legislative session, so that, you know, we are as coordinated as possible. And especially in an election year, you know, if we have new representative legislators, we can hit them right away. If we're pretty confident some will be reelected regardless, maybe we could start that process early. I can tell you that it was pretty much impossible to get anybody's attention during the session. And so, I mean, having open house like the day after the election, and I'm joking a little bit, but seriously, especially for new legislators or those who have, you know, watershed districts, I think that's, that's the process that needs to, needs to happen. And so I think that Minnesota Waters and any district who's interested in legislative impact needs to start because I have my doubts that the same process of making the changes that I got accomplished this year may not be, may not work in the future for all kinds of reasons. So I am finished, thank you.
Yes, Manager Crafton.
I'm not talking about just talking about legislation, I'm talking about, I mean, my people don't even know what we do, let's put it that way. So I think we need to invite people in and talk to them about what a watershed district's about, what kind of projects we do. I mean, we got a ton of stuff, all we'd have to do is line the room with stuff. And I know Nine Mile's the same way, or anybody else, you know. But I think we need to start that conversation and let them know who we are, what we care about, and, and build that relationship before we even get to talking about the legislative. So anyway, that's my thought on it.
Okay.
I disagree.
Okay, so I think all of us have agreed that if you have something you want to bring up as a potential resolution for us, please send it to Mr. Jeffrey. That leads us to the 2023 final audit report.
President Pedersen, Managers, ABDO did present to the Audit and Finance Committee at their last meeting. This is, we got a clean report, but there were two findings, one we've already discussed, and we'll draft a letter to that, that's the 30-day payment. And then the other was the, just the how we had put forward the funding for the, the purchase of the property, or for the earnest money that was put down on that property. We met, we discussed that with the, with ABDO at length, and I believe the Audit and Finance Committee and I have a good understanding of what we need to do to account for that money moving forward. And really, in essence, it's put it into that one fund, everything we've got. When the audit comes up, then it will be addressed at that time. In addition, I did reach out to Mr. Nielsen today to ask him again if he would present at the August meeting. I have not heard back from him yet, but it is still my intent to try and get him in to present, especially in light of the conversation we had earlier in this meeting.
We'll look forward to hearing his positive response. Right. Okay, we're, yes, Manager Cook.
Well, first of all, you know, I have, all my previous comments, I have no faith in the audit or their process, if they can't even get, you know, the process straight for the timing of payments on these invoices. I have absolutely no confidence in this audit. And again, for the other reason I mentioned, in the fact that they're allowing us to record on our books, the credit card company as the vendor, again, is just totally, you know, unacceptable based upon all the auditors that I've talked to, and particularly because our credit cards are not that small an item and they're growing. Okay, they used to be a few hundred bucks, and now they're getting into the thousands of dollars. So they're getting to be material on that basis. And if you want internal controls, fraud prevention, you know, you need the right kind of reporting and reporting of expenses if you're going to do this. I think we would fail, you know, internal processing. And as you noted, the auditors kind of wishy-washy about any degree to which they comment on, on, what do you call it, internal, internal processes, et cetera. So I, I think we should be, should be definitely looking for new auditors, somebody who has that, at least exercises the care and skill that I think we should all expect with regard to the audit. That's particular with, there's no excuse for ignoring a policy we've had standing for two years and not correcting it or commenting on it. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I can't, where was our accountant, okay, in dealing with and recording payments, you know, under the acquisition of the property or any of these other expenses? I mean, the accountant, a good accountant would have said, okay, you got these expenses, this is where you should be recording them. I don't know what you mean by one fund, but I don't think that's right because you should be having separate accounts for the acquisition of property. And you put all your expenses in there on that basis, assuming it comes to fruition, it gets changed as an asset on, you know, these are all added up to be assets on, on your books. And, you know, you put all the costs of acquiring an asset on your books, you know, it turns out actually is more than what the value of the property is, but my understanding, that's how you do it. So I fault also our accountants, you know, our staff aren't accountants, but I would fault the accountants for not saying, okay, you're, you've got these expenses having to do with acquisition, et cetera. You know, this has gone, what, over a year, year and nine months that we've been talking about acquiring property, and they don't catch it, you know, and it leaves it to the auditors. You know, something's wrong with their accountants, and I think I've expressed my concerns about, about them as well. So I would think that we're in dire need of reexamining who we have as our auditors and our accountants. So I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you. I believe we're on to manager reports. Do we have a manager who wishes to?
So I, we keep having these discussions in our committee meeting about how can we expedite this, why taking so long, you know, what? So the way the process works right now, I provide another set of eyes oversight, so I compare all the receipts, everything that's going to be submitted to the accountant. And I tie everything out. And what I was going to try to bring up in committee, which we can still do that, for, see if there's a recommendation to come out of the committee, but we come to this meeting and when they say, okay, we, we recommend that you pay the bills, is that something we could delegate to the committee? All, all the internal controls are being satisfied. If there is a problem, then we would bring it to the board. I mean, there have been times when I said, I don't want to accept the report this time because I, I've got some issues and I got to figure out what, if there's a problem But if we could expedite this, I mean, I would usually get the checks that came here this time, like the Friday before the meeting. Everything's already been tied out and gone through, and I would sign the checks at that point and then get them to the office. But if you start with Friday, you've just shortened up the time to really close to the 35 days, so that there wouldn't be an issue. So I guess I'm just bringing this up because I wondered if, I just thought it was something that should be considered, because all the internal controls were already.
In place.
In place and done, as we do right now. But if we could expedite this a little bit.
Mr. Smith, you have a comment?
That's something they can do.
Madam President, Managers, I appreciate the idea of a process to expedite and the work that goes into bringing the Treasuries Report to the board. And it is conceivable to me that the board could adopt a policy and authorize bill payment, maybe with certain, within certain parameters. I don't think I would recommend that you do that. And, and the reason why is I think it's still ultimately important that each of you board members exercise your fiduciary responsibility of reviewing the monthly expenses of the district and understanding the bills that are being paid, so that there are at least five sets of eyes and ears on, on the finances to that level. I think that's just good practice, and I can't think of a watershed district that delegates bill payment to a subcommittee or a smaller group. It's not that I can't conceive of the authority to do it, but I would just caution, because I think in terms of your, your practice and, and all of your responsibility for the finances of the district, I would urge you all to have all your eyes and ears on it in this format of a monthly board meeting review.
So all the watershed districts you know of have that on their agenda?
Yes.
So, Madam President?
Yes, Manager Duvel.
So, so the question I would have is how do, how do other watersheds do it? I mean, how do they do it? So many watersheds have their meetings later in the month than we do. So one of the issues that we have always with accounting is that we have the meetings so close to the cutoff. So we're carrying bills right up to the edge, and, and we get our financial statements before there's really time to do this processing. And so I'm wondering if other watersheds, do they not have the same issue? I mean, are you aware of anything like this with others that you deal with, Lewis?
Madam President, Manager Duvel, I think it, the, the process you used to receive invoices, the cutoff period for processing and preparing the financial reports and authorizing payment is a schedule you can adopt that meets your requirements. We also have adopted the policy of, you know, extending payment obligation out to 45 days. So you should be able to work within a schedule that you find workable, you know, with the accountants and the bookkeeping process and the meeting process that works with your meeting If that's an answer to your question.
Yeah, kind of.
So, so that's a resolution that we would ask the legislators to please change the 35 days to 45?
No. Madam President?
Yes.
The, the statute very clearly already provides that the obligation to pay within 35 days is unless otherwise provided by contract. So we otherwise provide by contract and have a longer pay period. So that shouldn't be a problem for the district.
Manager Cook has been trying to. Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I think that this is exactly what Mr. Smith stated, you know, and this is why we adopted the policy later on, because we did have the issue of us not paying on time. And I think we probably are still, we still actually owe certain vendors interest. You know, interest is, as I read the statute, it's not up to the vendor to be able to decide are they going to collect it or not. I think the statute's pretty specific, and the reason for it, in my opinion, was they didn't want vendors being coerced into not collecting their interest. So I, we, I believe we have the affirmative obligation to pay interest unless we fall within the exception provided in the statute. Besides, that's just, that's just good business. I mean, that's just a good way to maintain good relationships with, with vendors. And most vendors, what they want to know is, what are the ground rules? When am I going to get paid? And so I can have expectations because they've got payroll, et cetera, et cetera, you know, to pay on that basis. So I, I think that, I don't, and I agree with Mr. Smith, this should not be delegated to anybody other than the managers. Now, the process of getting it to the managers is a second issue, right? Who actually does the processing and the review and putting the report together? That's a second issue. That could be done by the auditor. That could be done by the auditors, I mean, the Audit Finance Committee or staff like it is. Whatever the procedure is, we should, and that should be written down. That'd be the process. Remember, I always, I call it kind of the A-bomb clause, you know? If all the rest of us get wiped out, we want it written down so somebody can come in and step, step in and get everything done. And my third point is, is that, you know, we can divorce the payment of bills, okay, from the financial statements in, by, and by simply saying, we are always producing tentative financial statements. Okay? And then when, after the bills have all been paid, you get to a point where you finalize the financial statement for the preceding month. So you can always have the process where here's our tentative balance sheet subject to, you know, finalizing the bills and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that would be a better process. So I would look to the Audit and Finance Committee to come up with and deal with the process and procedure and make a recommendation consistent with, certainly with what Attorney Smith said about ultimately, we need to see and approve the payment and have the ability to ask, you know, questions regarding those. So, do we not pay the bill? Did your lights flicker? Take your bills? So that's ends, ends my comments.
Did you have any other questions or?
I do.
Yes.
So is there any way we can pay the bills electronically?
President Peterson, Managers, we, I've actually been in contact with a firm, bills.com. And I have put them in touch with Red Path. And Red Path is working with them on what needs to happen to set up that plan. I had hoped to actually be able to bring something to you this month, but it has not yet been, she's not yet worked through all the logistics. So we will have something coming to you to decide as managers if this is the method that you would like to use for making payments.
So that takes out the postal.
At least it's three to five days, yeah, sometimes, yeah. Yeah.
Have we explored utilizing US Bank since they are associated with, what is it, 4M? Because I believe they're basically the payment, I don't know, payer mechanism, deposit person. I know a lot of, not a lot of you, but I know a lot of people who use US Bank and they can go in and cut the bills, et cetera. And the check gets, you know, US Bank automatically cuts the check, sticks it in the envelope and mails it off. And I don't know whether you have two-party authentication. I assume you would with a business, just like with the rest of our checks. But I would look at US Bank because if we can do it through US Bank, I think it would be maybe a little more seamless. And because we, you know, we've got our cash invested with the, with the help of 4M. So I, I think we should also examine, you know, US Bank since we've already utilized those as part of 4M. So I'm kind of, thank you.
Perhaps we need to turn this back to the Audit and Finance Committee to have some fun working on this. Any other?
Electronic payment, it happens the same day.
Yeah.
So, so I thought we did inquire with US Bank at one time. And they don't, so I, from a personal account, I mean, I pay all my bills with US Bank and it's all electronic. Some are scheduled regularly and I just review them and some I actually have to say pay it. But they do that, but I think it's a part of the commercial business and they, they want to get, it doesn't work that way with businesses and other entities outside of individuals. It's part of what, the way they do their business.
President Peterson, Managers, I have had some discussions with Jennifer Vicinovich, who is our account manager at US Bank. She didn't say no, but she did not indicate that it would be an easy process. The reason being, they would draw it back out of the 4M fund and then pay the checks. But I, I will follow up with her more on that and see what all it would take and if that is an option.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other manager reports?
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Just wanted to repeat for the record all my prior comments regarding the administration of the district. Particularly as I stated before, my firm belief that we need a duly qualified EHR consultant on that basis. And we also need a duly qualified IT consultant. And we are, believe we are lacking in IT policies that are generally part of best practices of ensuring that we have secure systems. And I don't believe we've paid attention to that. And in fact, Minnesota statutes specifically provides for, you know, us to be able to have closed sessions to discuss our security measures. And I'm gathering that includes, you know, IT, et cetera. So I believe we need to, you know, finally move forward in having both of those consultants to advise us, at least I would say annually, as to the operation of our personnel system as well as our IT systems. And I will leave it at that for right now. Thank you.
Manager DeVal?
So I have a couple of comments just on the tours that we had the last, in, in January, we had the Preserve, Preserve Association Tour on the 20th.
June.
Of June, I'm sorry, June. And there were a number of us, managers there, as well as CAC members. And it was, it was really interesting to see that project as kind of a long-term project and how it's evolving. I mean, they have some really nice setups with what they've done with the, I forget how many acres it is, like 20 acres, 30 acres? Something like that. I forgot what the manager's name is. Is it Steve something or?
Scott.
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 Right.
And he just, he kept talking about the, the relationship he had with us and it is really good and it's been, it's been helpful going back and forth. They have a landscape company that helps take care of the, the work that's been done. And he just sounded really grateful to be able to collaborate with us. And it's, again, it was another one of those situations where the watershed is dealing with a private entity that has kind of a strange connection to the community. But I think it's been really positive. The whole preserve area is, is a great park in the system. And it's kind of semi-open to the public, I guess, at this point. The other was the summer tour on the 25th and 26th. And again, just my takeaways of this contrast, most of the summer tours have been outstate. We're dealing with flooding issues and farm country views of the world. And so this is the first time I've been involved with one that deals with the metro. And, and it was really interesting to see the, the notion of the collaboration that takes place with all the watersheds that are in the metro area, with the communities, with the, there was one present, presentation of the Mississippi, Mississippi River watershed. And, and they were talking about DEI. And I, I guess my concept of DEI was different from what they talked about. And the DEI related to how they integrated the whole community. So we live in kind of a bubble here, I think, in terms of the mix of the kind of people. So we kind of forget about that element. We might have some of that here that we should be thinking about. So anyway, it was, it was interesting to see how they developed their collaboration schemes for doing projects. And again, it was, it was, that was really, really interesting. And then, so this was the first day. And then the, City of Edina gave a presentation on the Morningside Flood Project, you know, originally developed in the 50s and kind of a poor land site that was kind of a hole in the ground in, in Edina Morningside. But they just have completed, I think it's relatively recently now, their, their whole program. And they spent, the city paid $14 million to deal with storm watershed, stormed sewer watershed runoff in a very elaborate system. I don't know, was it Bard?
Yeah, Bard signed it.
So, I mean, just the interesting concept of dealing with weather forecasting and the electronics. They look three days ahead at storms that are coming. And as it gets closer, it gets down to every hour, they're looking at storm water forecast. And then they've got a system set up to actually move water out of holding ponds to take, to, to collect the water that might be coming from the storm. But anyways, just interesting to see the dynamics of something that was really all encompassing. And then the other thing that came out on that, they discussed the difficulty of, of the watershed and dealing with the rules in terms of dealing with infrastructure. Again, it just kind of contorts everything they deal with. The watershed rules say something, but to actually make it work, you know, and, and dealing with existing or old infrastructure takes a kind of a, it's kind of like a Rubik's Cube where you have to figure out different ways to deal with it. And it sounded like that was a big part of the process. So the other thing that kind of came up in one of the questions was most of the stormwater comes from Minneapolis, Minnetonka and St. Louis Park. It doesn't come from the immediate area. So again, getting at the rules about the cause and effect as it relates. And, and so one of the things they mentioned there was dealing with, and we've talked about a little bit with projects downstream and the structure of what we do. And they had a motto that's something like, do no harm. But the, but the whole concept again is, you know, we're dealing with our watershed, our projects, our smaller chunks within the watershed. And a lot of what we're doing is, is relating to whatever happened upstream from us. And what we're doing is impacting downstream. So again, it was just kind of an interesting perspective. And I think, I think the notion that, that they're dealing with metro in the city, we're dealing with old and somewhat newer infrastructure. And so the projects don't lay out the same way that they do outstate. So again, the dynamic of how that works, how it connects with the state, all the rules and regulations. And so anyway, the tour was really great also. And again, just seeing how the infrastructure has actually been modified and the partnerships that, that take place between the cities, the counties and the watershed districts. And so a lot of those are projects that have been in the works for a long time and they're really interesting to see. At least for me, it was really, the tours have always been interesting, but the metro tour was extra interesting from my perspective. And just one other, one other, well, two other comments, actually. One was the Lake Owasso County Park. Again, just sort of really dilapidated old infrastructure. And they, they rebuilt the, the lake banks. They, they changed the pattern of the street that came down the hills, which got people to slow down and they developed parking lots. But I don't know, the question for, for Scott, I, they had an interesting, so one of the little demonstration things, they had a sprinkler set up in the parking lot. They turned it on for the group that was coming in with the buses. And I'm looking at it and wondering, you know, why they're doing it. Towards the end, they said, well, it's the, it's the pavement that they put down. It's not blocks, it's not previous blocks. But it was pavement. Have, have we used that at all? It's, it was blacktop, but the water went right into the blacktop.
So the district has not used it per se, but the city of Chanhasan has used it in a couple of locations.
So I thought that was interesting in terms of ideas for retrofitting. So you think about the blocks that are out there and they disintegrate with the salt and the plowing and everything else, the pavers. But the blacktop, the water goes in just like it's the ground. You know, if you have the right kind of subsurface. Anyway, that was an interesting notion. And then, then the other one that was really interesting was the Maplewood Mall. And Fred was kind of leading the charge on that. Of all the things they did to deal with water runoff of the huge parking lot and the pollution problems they had with the, with the lakes. But they actually turned it, in addition to solving that problem, they turned it into a demonstration project with a cistern that collected all the water off the roof of the mall and then setting up these little islands of the trees and the, anyway, it's just, it was really eye-opening to me. And the, the tours have always been good, but this was really interesting to see the city. And again, I think it's, it's like an older version, I think, of where we're headed now, having to deal with how we rework the infrastructure to deal with the problems that we have now. We don't have any more free land to go in and do it the way it should be done. We're having to deal, but deal with all the issues that go around. Anyway, too long, but it was just interesting.
Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
I have just one thing. I was up at Forest Lake, Comfort Lake for their delisting ceremony. And they used it as a tool to invite the legislators that were involved, partners that were involved and say, okay, we did all this work. It took, you know, eight years. Here's all the things we did. You know, here's all the partners that helped. They had their local legislators, the local mayor of the town. They had Bowser and other people there. And even Lake Association for Bone Lake. And they did some amazing stuff. It's not really any different than what we do. But, you know, they went through the eight years of getting Bone Lake delisted. And they had somebody there from the DNR too, I think. So, you know, that's something we could do on a regular basis. I think when we have a lake that's delisted and draw in the legislators, you know, to the celebration and get them to like, to see what, what their work has done, right? Because they're the partners that go unsung in a lot of cases.
Thank you.
Sure.
I've got a couple of comments, but if you wanted to say something?
Go, go ahead.
Okay, so you're talking upstream, downstream? You just voted on a project that took land from one house to 17 lots and sent the water all downstream. So we're creating infrastructure going from 18-inch to 21-inch pipe. It's, it's not, we're creating it at the same time. But the other thing about the preserve, I mean, it was just amazing, the work that they're doing with Natural Shores. But that is water conservation because that water is all going into being absorbed in the soil organic matter and all that landscaping they're doing. It was just gorgeous. And so that's what the EHAP is all about. I mean, it's about water conservation as well as habitat, as well as the water cycle. I mean, it's, so we're doing some stuff, yeah.
That was like a giant demonstration project almost.
Well, and that's what the, the golf course on the tour was.
Yep.
It's amazing, except that I fell down and sprained my ankle. Yeah, but, yeah, but that was, I mean, that's what they're trying to do with all the. It was neat because Paul Erdman was there.
Well, thank you, Managers. I believe we're on to the administrative report. Do we have an administrative report?
Real quick, President Peterson, Managers. So in February of this year, a call went out for cybersecurity grant through, through Bowser, actually through an organization. I'm blanking on their name right now, but we were accepted into that grant program. That would begin in October. And they will be doing a review of our city, of our systems and making recommendations. And there's grants available for upgrading that system. So that will be taking place this fall. And then the Minnesota, I've talked to Manager Crafton about this a little bit. The Minnesota Non-Point Priority Funding Plan is out. We're, Minnesota Association of Watershed Administrators are going through it, having our comments, one of them being that it seems to be very agriculturally focused. And I think those same themes that they're using, you know, altered hydrology because of soil changes happens here as well as in the ag. And I think those same themes that they're using, you know, altered hydrology because of soil changes happens here as well as in the ag. So we're going through that and commenting on that.
That's a nonpoint?
Yep.
I couldn't find it on their website. Can you?
I can send it to you. I'll send it to you.
Julie told me, Westerland told me that it was going to include environmental functions, ecological.
And they do, they just have it in kind of a nebulous way. So I think they need to really kind of clarify what they're meaning by that, so.
I think we should invite her out here. Let's talk to her about the EHEP and what we're trying to do. You're not, I will. Well, sorry.
Only got a dime. We'll get that.
No, but it's, we just had that presented at the board meeting.
Yeah.
And so I was like, they're changing. And I said something about ecological functioning. We are factoring that in.
They do have ecosystem services put into the plan.
Well, I don't trust how well they're doing it, so. But I think we definitely need to comment on that.
Yeah, so that's what we're putting together is that comment package.
Okay.
That's
And be sending that out then?
Pardon?
Will Jan be sending that out? Or are we going to do it ourselves?
Jan, it's going to come from the Minnesota Association of Watershed Administrators. So that they don't have, because as you know, outstate will have different comments than the metro area. So we're trying to give them a clearer set of comments instead of pulling in two different directions.
But, so like the Boyta Sioux, that Muskinka project where they've got all those buffers and they've remeandered, I think it was that one. Anyway, one of them that they showed recently, I mean, they fought buffers up there like crazy, but that's part of what's, that's part of the ecosystem functioning stuff, okay? Because, so I mean, it applies everywhere. It's not like just rural.
Right.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Jeffrey?
That is all I have.
Okay. Legal counsel?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. And obviously you can see we have some board topics coming up over the next couple of months or so.
Yep.
And we have the Salt Symposium. Tell me the date on that again.
Yeah, I forgot to put the date on. That is Eleanor or Liz on right now? Can't see. I will send that date out and update this on the website so that the date is included.
All righty. And it looks like our next meeting again is the Board Workshop to discuss the budget levy and then we'll add the legislative platform resolutions onto that on the eighteenth. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Manager Crafton. And may we have a vote, please?
On the motion to adjourn, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peters.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you all so much for coming. Thank you all who are online for coming.